Officially recall this meeting to order. So, welcome everybody to our second night of our goal setting. We have Sarah Singer Wilson here again with us to kind of lead us through our discussion. I hope everyone did their homework last night and today, which was to kind of just spend some time thinking about Sandy's future. Looking forward to an exciting discussion today. I know that everyone on this, in this meeting cares very deeply about our future. I know I've had many conversations with all of you where we were kind of looking, you know, into the future and what our community could look like. So it's very exciting and and I'm just really happy that we're going to be able to tackle this together as kind of a unified group. And with that, Sarah, go ahead and take it away and I'll step into the background here.
All right. Well, welcome back, everybody. I'm just, I'm so, I thought we had just a great session yesterday. It was really pleased with the conversation, the engagement, the outcomes, and the fact that we ended right at 8:00 PM on the dot. You guys were so precise in, in, in your conversations. So, looking forward to what we've got planned for tonight. So I'm going to go ahead and share. I put the mural link in the chat. So hopefully you all saw that. If not, I'll, I'll paste it again because there may be, there may have been a few people who signed on after I'd already shared it. And so you can follow along there if you'd like. Again, certainly not required, but it can be handy for those who, who like to play with the technology. All right. So workshop number two, outcomes for tonight. So we're going to just look back for a moment on our community context that we worked on last night, just kind of reorient to that. And again, that'll get us ready for our visioning activities. There were some good ideas that came up during that conversation. So I just want to reorient to that and make sure it's fresh in your minds as we go into tonight's exercises. And we're also then, we're going to shift into identifying the vision. And so as you recall, we talked about this, this is in preparation for the comp plan. Update that you guys are going to do. And it's also just going to be really helpful as you think about your goals and are the goals that we set during this work going to help move you a little bit closer to that vision. So the vision, it describes how the community wants to look, feel and function in 20 years. And so think about where you are in life 20 years from now. And, and think about your families, where your families will be, you know, 20 years from now and what they're going to expect from a community. And then the last thing we'll work on will be to, to begin our discussion of ideas for the goals to guide the community in 2021. I know that there's lots of them out there. I got to meet with staff and talk to all of the counselors. So I know that you all have some priorities in mind and hopefully the exercises will maybe even prompt some different or new ideas. As we get into that and we'll get those all mapped out this evening. So our agenda, those are our outcomes, agenda to get there. We'll do a quick review of our ground rules and just the roles. We'll do a quick team check-in to see kind of where everybody's at and just see how you're doing. And see if you have any questions about the process. Well, then we'll get into our visioning exercise. 7:30 we'll take a break. So in just a quick break, five minutes and then we'll do a vision wrap-up and I don't know why that, I forgot to delete that piece. Seven third, and then we'll get into the idea mapping exercise. Then 8:45 we'll wrap up, do any questions or next steps, the reflection exercise and just checkouts really quickly and then make sure we end again by nine o'clock. So roles, again, I'm here to guide you. Counsel's here to set the policy, bring that community perspective forward, set the general vision and path. And staff, you're here to also share your ideas, your experiences, your perspective, provide that technical expertise. And then our rules that we set always, you know, patience with the technology, ask for help if you need it. You guys were really great about that. Just respect one another and provide space for everybody to be heard. Keep the history in mind, but also be open to changes in the, in a new course. Terminology, if we, you know, get, see any terminology, let's pause and ask if we're not familiar with it. Or define any acronym, make sure everybody stays on the same page. Let's stay out of the weeds and stay at that 30,000 foot big picture level. Think local, keep Sandy in mind and what we can impact and lead on here. And just be upfront and honest, be candid. The intention is to clarify and it's okay to respectfully disagree. Always assume positive intent. We're all here for, for the right reasons, for good reasons to, to ultimately serve the community and make the Sandy the best place it can be. And as we get into the goal piece, that this will be more so for our third session. But goals are going to move forward with consensus or majority support. So just know we want to, we want to make sure, and that it is important to mention that now because as you're having conversations about potential ideas for goals. You know, we want to try to gauge where their, where's their buy-in. And, and if you're not getting a sense from folks that they're, they're buying into it, ask questions and engage them in conversation around, around the themes and the idea mapping that you see. All right. Any questions about any of that? Pause my share. Everybody's on board with this game plan?
Sarah, is that board going to be shared too as we go through tonight? Or is the, with the agenda for, for day two?
Um, you mean the link?
Yeah.
Yeah, I put it in the chat, but again, some, depending on when you joined. You may not have seen it. Did that come up?
Okay, I'm seeing the agenda for day one.
Oh, you know what? Let me ask, let me.
Oh, I just need to scroll over.
Scroll over. Yeah. On that, Jordan, since you asked the question, let, I'm going to resume my share and I'm just going to show you guys a few tricks with mural. If you, if you decide to use it and follow along. So as I just asked you to follow me and I can always at any point if somebody's lost, I can summon you to where I am on the board so that everybody can, can find and follow, quickly follow along. So just if you're lost, let me know and just a quick click and we can make that happen. Depending on what kind of computer you're working on. You may want to have, I'm using a mouse, so I have it in mouse mode. If you're using a trackpad, it's, it's easier to click trackpad mode and that'll help you navigate much easier around the board. And it'll customize it based on what you're using. Let's see, when we get into the vision exercise, there's a couple of features I just, I want to highlight here. So if you are, if you just want to put a post-it on the board, all, the only thing you have to do is double-click and it's going to pop a post-it up. You can change the size of that. You can change the color. You can change it to a small sticky note, a bigger one, a circle. But anywhere on the board, you double-click and it's going to pop a post-it up. You, I made sure tonight especially to lock everything down, knowing that we might, some of you might experiment with using the board. So don't worry, you're not going to move any of this. The only thing you could potentially do is if somebody puts something up, you could accidentally delete their items. Don't do that. Try not to anyway. And we can always, if you do anything that you find you messed up, you can always hit this undo button. That's our saving grace here. Just undo it. Let's see, when you get into the, the cover story vision that exercise that we're going to do. You can actually pull images onto the board. So you can search, this just generates from, from the internet. So we can search downtown Sandy. And you know, all sorts of images will pull up. And so you can pull anything into the mural if there's an image that supports the vision that you're thinking. So really, it's kind of cool. And then you can just, you know, delete it. But anyway, you can search anything to add to the mural. If you want to put icons on there. Yeah, I mean, there's thousands. You can search anything you want and put an icon on there. Again, make it bigger, change the color. So there's lots of ways that you can creatively represent your ideas. Any questions about that? Those are the, those are the main tips and tricks. So if you decide you want to use it when we get into some of the exercises, I invite you to try. And if not, it always works to paste your comments in the chat. Or to email them to me and I'm happy to put them up on the board or, or type them in. So don't worry. Don't worry if it's not your thing.
So Sarah, I didn't mention it last time. I was trying to get a feel for what was happening, but I'm seeing it showing up this time is again, I'm a visual person. I like to see things. I like to visualize it. A lot of times when you're starting to put a lot of information on there, it gets so small, I can't read what you're talking about. So if you could kind of think in minds of, if you do get a lot of information, you can start focusing in on the part that we're talking about rather than the entire package.
Okay. Yep, any, anytime. And, and so, yeah, especially as we get into the idea mapping, there'll be lots of ideas up there. So that may happen. So if I'm, if I'm not, just, you know, remind me and I will happily zoom in on, on whatever it is that we're trying to focus in on. If you can't see something. Again, everybody's screens are a little bit different. So you know, you may just have to put in a request. So I, so I know, because sometimes I can see it, but you may not be able to see it. So just let me know if at any point you need something.
I hear everybody else is that there is a view option up on top that gives you maximizing your screen. So that's where I'm at right now and it's still too small for me at times, but it has helped to have it maximized.
Okay.
And as I say, if you bring up the link yourself and have it on there, you can zoom in and anywhere you want is, and you can see her moving around doing the same thing. So it can be another trick.
So you'll have to show me how to do that at another time.
All right. Let's see, any other questions before we jump, kind of jump in to our work here? I just want to do a quick check-in. How's everybody feeling after last night's session? Or just how, like just a quick check-in as far as, you know, physically, mentally, emotionally, how are we? I'll just say physically, I've, it's been a long day. This is my second retreat of the day. So I am feeling a little tired, but mentally I really love this work. So I feel really sharp and like in, in retreat mode and very much in the groove. And emotionally, I just, I'm feeling super excited. You guys did really good work last night and just, I'm, I'm ready to continue that. So anybody else want to check in and just share how, how they're feeling?
I was pretty pumped last night leaving this, but the problem I have with city council meetings being on Zoom real quick, as I'm sitting at my computer. So as we all get off, I do the mistake of checking my work email. So I did that till midnight, but you know, it's a, I'm excited to come back and dream a little bit and see where we're going to take our city together.
Good. All right. So yeah, late nights, but we'll feed off each other's energy as much as we can. Any, anybody else want to check in?
Yeah, Dan, I, I'll just say I, I agree with Jeremy. I took away from yesterday. I was really excited about our meeting and just the collaboration and the different breakout sessions and kind of how it all was trending where a lot of us were seeing a lot of the same things with the city and just, you know, while it's kind of an odd time with COVID and it being in a state of transition, it's also an exciting time to think through how we're going to deliver services to our citizens in a new, in kind of a new world. So looking forward to tonight and just thinking even more about what the future is going to look like. I am tired though. This is like several, I'm several Zoom meetings in.
Yes. We'll respect the, the fatigue. Yeah. John.
Hey, as I was thinking about, you know, what we produced, it occurred to me that COVID has been such a big part of our discussion that I, I have some concerns that maybe we're not looking future enough, that maybe COVID has made us look shorter term. And so I just, you know, just kind of a plug to all of us to really be thinking further out. I mean, COVID's nasty and it's horrible and it may change some things down the road, but, but our ability to affect what happens in the next six months is pretty minimal compared to 20 years from now.
Yeah, a good, definitely a good reminder that it is taking up a lot of brain space and a lot of planning, but I certainly think you guys have some good ideas around how context is shifting based on that. But yeah, keep it in mind, you know, long, we're here for the long term. All right. Other check-ins. Saw a couple of thumbs up from staff.
So, all right, I'm in again to pretty excited about having been able to understand how other people do things. So I've taken notes a lot about how people are visual writers, talkers and all the rest. So I'm pretty appreciative of knowing how people think and how they get through problems. I'm a little more of a doer thing. So I'm really want to get into it. It's like getting some meat done there. Let's start ticking them off. Looking for.
We will, we will start getting there tonight. I know it is, it is kind of a process. And we, again, last night was really kind of about building the strong foundation. And so you're going to just see how these building blocks fit one right on top of the other. And, and as we get into the work, especially when we get to session three, that's when that's kind of when stuff gets a little more challenging and, and the conversations get really meaty. So we'll get there. Don't worry. The work is coming. Anybody else? All right. Well, let's see, let's just do a quick recap from session one. So can you guys see that? Now I maximize my screen. So I can't tell if it's sharing it. Can you see it? Yes. Okay, good. So back over to session one over here. So we did our environmental scan. And some of the growth trends, you know, growing quickly, younger, younger families, first time home buyers. More office, more white collar workers. Just in, in ensuring that we're going to be creative to define the desired future condition. So that's a couple of things on growth there. Technology, we talked a lot about how technology could impact the future. And just, you know, those local businesses increasingly transitioning workforce to remote working. Thinking about technology gaps and where there could be some inequities there. Government is really recognizing more than ever the importance of, of being, providing mobile services and just supporting mobile services. 5G is going to be more present. Sandy net, we all recognize the great value of that and just can't say enough good things about it. So how, how do we continue to ensure that's strong into the future? Wifi on transit and e-fares. And so lots of, lots of things about how, how we can consider these technology trends as we think about goals for the future. Economic climate. There were several things of just how everything, the economy, everything ties into it. And the government's relatively stable right now, especially compared to other sectors. But is there a crunch coming? And, and I think that kind of ties into our uncertainty. Let's see, other community trends and homelessness. I've heard more about homelessness in every community than I've, I've ever heard about it before. So Sandy's no different. We're all, we're struggling with this as an issue. Community resiliency and sustainability and just recognizing needs for social services. I think we've just recognized a lot of service gaps. Community needs strain on infrastructure, transportation. Youth, you know, can finding space for them to connect again. Recreation and services. So people just moving here, again, you guys are seeing growth just for, so people could be closer to the outdoors. And just wanting to be nimble and serve people who want in-person services as well as those who are going to want to participate remotely. And being able to increase amenities as, as the community continues to grow in all of these different areas. Let's see, some of the, the themes that we picked up is just recognizing 2020 has impacted each area. So again, getting back to Don's comment, how are we going to balance that? With, you know, really thinking if beyond COVID and for the future. Transition because of growth. So in addition to transition of service delivery post-COVID. So you guys are in a couple transitions here. Where you mentioned that people moving to Sandy to escape Portland. So making sure that as you guys plan for the future, that you're able to protect, protect that unique living experience that people are looking for. Lots of different needs for doing different things, but the economic constraints could, could prevent some of those things. Innovation, a lot of these issues at the district level are out of, are at the direct level are out of our control, but need to be innovative in our response, acceptance. There's acceptance that growth is happening and we need to figure out how to reach the people coming into our community. So being smart growth, intentional, technologically correct. Commercial manufacturing jobs to go with that. There's demand, but you guys get the chance to control the supply and to ensure that it's intentional growth. So, and then just mentioning because of Zoom and technology, the world's getting smaller and Sandy is poised to, to be in a good place because of Sandy net. Again, can't say enough good things about it. So any other insights or flashes of brilliance that you all had coming out of last night after you had a chance to reflect on some of this? Anything come up for anybody? Yeah, Carl.
Sorry. Yeah, I got to looking at some of the stuff this afternoon and, and in spite of the fact that we're talking about long-term goals and some things out there quite a ways. This particular council is talking about 2021 and 2022. I think one of the things we have not discussed very much is the exhaustion of our citizens about being in the isolation of the world they're in right now. I see people doing things that are in at odds with some of the governor's order and things that need to be recognized. And I think that as leaders, we need to find a way to mediate some of those things and try to figure out a way to help ourselves recover from that. So even though some of these goals are 20, 20 years out, we, next couple of years, I think we're still going to be trying to figure out at least the first year, how to move out of the COVID impacts. Some of those things are just, I think we can do, there are some things that we could get involved in and help that process out.
Okay. Other, other thoughts, insights? Yeah, Jeremy?
Yeah, I just inside, just looking that over that, as you read it again, just what a great city we live in and how we've come from, the foundation is there and to keep continuing going in the right direction of building to keep the community even getting better as we move forward. We have a lot of the foundation work to, to, to do that. So we're not having to create a lot of that foundation work. It's already been done. Or is solid, it should say, and we can build off of that. So one of the observations that I had.
Yeah, absolutely. Other insights?
I guess I, I have a little question about, you know, in reading through a lot of those things, some of those things are much longer term and, and maybe some of those things, I, I know there are some pretty short-term goals that we have. And so is there, I guess, an opportunity or is there a part, is part of the process trying to kind of prioritize or outline the timelines for, for these? Or do you, how do you see that playing out?
Yeah, excellent question. So the because we're going into this next exercise where we're going to think about long-term vision, I think it is really good to have this, this long-term mindset. And then we will think about short-term goals as well. You're right, you're doing goal setting for just the next couple of years. I think you guys do this every two years. Is that correct, Jordan? Yes. So we certainly do want to make sure that we're giving staff good direction for the next couple of years as far as what the priorities are. So some of the goals you're going to set may end up being long-term. We may need to put them into two buckets because there's, there's things that you need to do in order to keep long-term stuff moving forward. But there's also going to be, I'm going to ask the council to think about priorities. Like what do you absolutely want to see done in the next two years? And, and we'll give it, we'll give you guys a chance to prioritize those. So you kind of have to think about both, both sides, short-term and long-term goals. Because we all know you have, you have to start somewhere on the long-term stuff. So if it's important, you, you want staff thinking about it and, and to begin working on that. And a big thing that's coming up that we already know is going to, you're going to dedicate resources to is your comprehensive plan update. Which is going to dictate a lot of your, your long-term stuff. Good question. Did that make sense? Did I answer it? I know it's probably like an attorney answer like yes, no.
No, you did. Thank you. I, you know, and even, you know, I guess where, from where I sit, even just planning on the cop plan, there's things that we need to do, you know, it's shorter term to our code to just get, you know, get us between now and, and when the comp plan happens. So yeah, I think, I think that's very helpful. Thank you.
You bet. Other, other questions, insights, comments on the work we did yesterday? All right. Not seeing any. Well, let's keep it moving. So first thing we're going to do today, and I, I kind of set you guys up yesterday and getting you thinking about it. So I'm going to go here to our template. And can everybody see that? Yes. Okay. So I'm going to divide you into three teams and I'm going to switch it up from yesterday. Because I want you to all, I want everybody to get a chance to work with different people. Again, it's all part of building a good, strong team across staff and council and and so I will mix up your teams and you guys are going to begin first by thinking about where's the pub, what, where's this being published? Like give yourself at least some framework of, you know, 20 years from now. You will be reading something and what publication is that? And, and so just identify, you know, the framework and then think through, you just start, you can start brainstorming. So what are some of the things you want to, you want to share in this story? What's the, you know, what's this, what's the big news and what are some of the things that you hope to come, come out in this story? And so just start putting some ideas down. That's, that's an easy place to start. Once you have some ideas down, you think, okay, what are the main points of the story that we want to cover? What are maybe some supporting details? Maybe it's some data, maybe there's some metrics that, that go along with your story. Maybe there's specific imagery that you want to see. And then, you know, as you start to get these ideas down, you will start, hopefully a theme will emerge and you'll start to think, okay, well, what if I were reading this story, what would be a compelling headline? That would drive me to want to read it. And so that's where you'll put your, your main headline or what's on the homepage. And then you can think through, this is kind of a fun part, like if something was trending on social media, what's the, what are some of the buzz, the, what's the buzz that's happening? What are maybe some of the hashtags, hashtags probably, you know, are probably already on the way out, but imagine there's still a thing in 20 years and, and something's trending. So what's the buzz that's happening? You can even come up with a quote, you know, what did, what did the governor say about Sandy or what did, you know, what did the president say about Sandy or some, some famous person that maybe drove through and visited? So you can think through like, what are people saying about the community that, that's so special? So those are, that's how you're going to fill this out. What happens after this exercise is we'll have three teams telling their story and, and sharing their news story. And I want everybody to the team, try to, try to have everybody participate in, in the sharing. And we will definitely start to see some themes emerge. And this is how we'll, we'll build on those themes to come up with a vision statement. Trust me, this is a much more fun way of coming up with a vision statement than just breaking you into groups and saying, okay, now write a vision statement for the community. This is a much more imaginative way to, to tap in, use both sides of your brain to think about what is, what do you want to see in 20 years for your community? So that's, if it seems a little silly, it is a little silly, but it's a way, it's a way to get you to think bigger and broader and and to not just be tasked with having to write a vision statement. So I think you'll be surprised with what comes out of it. So really just embrace the silliness of it, embrace some creativity. Think big, think bold. There's no wrong answers to this. This is use your imagination. And then when we get into the goal setting piece, that's where, that's where it gets real. And that's where we'll focus in on some of the real stuff, but it's good to think big and bold for a 20-year vision. Any questions? I know some are feeling a little tired, but tap into whatever energy reserves you have and have a little fun with this. I'm going to, I'm going to put you in your breakout groups. I'll check in with you and try to infuse some energy if you guys are feeling stuck in any way as you work through it. So timeline. Let's see, this exercise we've allocated. We have an hour to do it. So why don't, but let's start with 30 minutes and see how you guys are due in 30 minutes. And again, I'll pop into all of the groups and check on you. If we need more time, we can do that. But I want to make sure we have enough time to debrief and, and talk about the themes because that's a really important conversation. So I'm going to pause this. I'm going to, it'll take me just a minute. So if you need to get up and stretch or something, go ahead and do that while I put your breakout groups together. Okay, I am going to open the rooms. You guys. I am going to open the rooms. You guys will have 30 minutes. Again, message me if you have, if you need some help or have any questions. Here we go. Did you guys get your invite? Kelly and the mayor?
She kicked us out.
That was rude. We were still talking.
That was mid-sentence.
And then all of a sudden, we were gone.
Did it not tell you that you had a, you have a warning like once I
I was trying to get it.
No, sorry.
I thought we had an hour. That was only a half hour, right?
Yeah. Did you guys need more time?
Yeah. You know, what I, what I appreciated was being mid-sentence to be brought into this and Sarah pre-muted. Make sure we were muted as we came in.
Hey, I, you know what? Zoom makes the rules here. I don't know. I don't mess with all the settings. I can put you, if you guys need a few more minutes, I can put you back in your rooms and if you want to finish up. I, I, nobody had contested. I was sending messages to kind of give you countdown warnings. I don't know if you guys saw that.
I think what we need to do is be able to put it on the cover. Like I said, group two, I'm guessing Jeff, are you in group two?
I don't know what our number is.
That's, that's us. Group two, group two.
Oh, Don, okay. I was guessing as who is the overachiever in the
Well, why don't, do you guys want to take five more minutes, five more minutes to wrap it up and put some of your ideas up there?
Yeah, I think what like Don did there, someone just double clicks on there and it creates a sticky note and you type in your, your
That's a quick, easy way to do it. Okay. I will open the rooms for five more minutes. If anybody's done, if you guys don't need the extra time, then take a, take a little stretch break. Okay. All right, I'm going to open them back up. You'll have five minutes to to wrap up wherever you were mid-sentence. And I apologize for for cutting off your brilliance. There you go. Recording again.
We had the city recorder in our room. That was like a huge.
Always helps.
We had the finance guy and that was a terrible downer.
That's what I tend to do. That's my, that's my headline for 20 years, the downer.
Just down to earth, yeah.
At least you say. Also realistic.
Do you know, Tyler, I learned basic accounting from a guy who did the books for the mafia out of Denver. Just just so you know.
All right. Everybody made it back. You guys needed extra time, but that's good. That means you were having good discussion. I'm really excited to, I didn't I didn't peek ahead of time. So I'm really excited to hear what you came up with. It'll all be new to me. So let's go ahead. I'm going to have you guys tell your stories. And I'll just let you guys volunteer, whoever wants to go first. Do we have any, any group that wants to volunteer to share first?
Go, Jeff.
Team three will go first.
Group three? Okay, I'm going to share my screen so we can see your board and I will zoom into group three. Can everybody see that? You've got lots of pictures.
Yeah, but Carl, I think you can tell this story.
Yeah, I think you should definitely start with the hot headline.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Well, the headline is really important. It says the whole thing. Jeremy Pete's old council president, 2041. Opens up.
2041, dude.
Not to interrupt, but it's official, the waste water treatment plant's being named after Exner. It has to happen now. Fun like that, it has to happen.
Oh, wow.
Jeremy is going to be in here for a long time. And of course, he's still going for reelection. I want to put that in there too, but
Oh, good gravy, guys.
We focused on the other side of the world. So we're art startup and I don't know, I'm going to just be winging and praying here. So our concept was that in 2041, that the bypass would be just in place. But it has a really great twist and the rest of you join in and add to the, as you go along here, if you see I missed something, but what we thought was a connectivity between one side of the city and the other, where it takes off from someplace around the Jarl Street and Orient and then connects back up around Shorties. But the way that that would connect up with is really important that way. So the bypass runs through the south of town, like I said, just out of the way, gets the town to settle down. So estimating double the number of cars that are coming through, 60,000 or 70,000 cars. This is under main points. A day going through the town. So we get those out of the town and we just reduce it down to 20 or 30 cars, not thousand cars, but 20 or 30 cars. Businesses are well, before I get into businesses, we thought we would connect the city with a series of ecology, wetlands and bike trails and walk trails, art parks and different thoughts that would draw people to walk through the city. Since we don't need to have two one-way streets down the middle of town carrying all that, we would have places for parties, we'd have places for dances, we'd have a connectivity there between, like I said, one side of the city and the other. Also, our community center would be kind of an integral part of that and would be certainly well-established. The pool would be able to have big parties and and swimming and the things that go on within a community center that also has a senior center and youth center, those kind of things all established there with the parks around that. So the businesses also would be twisted just a little bit so that they would reflect some of the character of the downtown part of Sandy. So there would be maybe some sales on like an REI kind of a business where they would focus on bikes and walking shoes and running shoes for Jeremy. So Jeremy could run up and down these park park trails. So that we'd have a really interesting connection between the social part of Sandy where people are in existence and a connected and intertwining of the wildlife, the forestry, the lands that we love to see that contain birds, fishes. Some of the mammals and things that are connected around the, in those kind of places. So more parks interconnected. Help me out. I'm having a hard time reading there. Jeff, could you can help me up underneath the supporting details? Oh, there we go. Proctors now one lane for vehicles. We have lanes for bicycles and outdoor seating. Things that would happen like around art park. Maybe even a few of those that would establish different kinds of art for people to sit and and spend time in a quieter mode where you'd have maybe cars, but they would be slow. Traffic speed would be very minimal. A new bike network of connectivity between the community campus, the aquatic center, the the different parks, different parts of the city, the old established parks like Myding and Bornstead Park with our our water park that that would be, we get tractors, people would be able to travel by park that way and by trails. Similar to the band, things that would be different districts of city connected. So things like greenways, walking paths, traffic diverted around the town, places where people could see different special amenities within the city. We do have streams, we do have, like I said, the the wetlands, so things that would be able to see things specialized within the city, the wildlife viewing opportunities for some of our school kids who come in and be able to look at these areas as a part of education as well. What did I miss?
The historical connection to the Oregon Trail and and the modern day, that that kind of connection thing.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, the wagon ruts.
Making a play on the fact that the Oregon Trail goes through the city, I think it was Tanya that talked about how some other cities have put wagon trails of ruts into concrete. So if people could actually kind of get a feel for maybe what would have passed through the middle of Sandy in that way.
All right.
Our theme, just to add, our theme was very like, obviously post-COVID, like let's party, let's like hang out with each other, let's play outside together. So it was very post-COVID, which is awesome to hear.
Oh, 20 years, I hope we're 20 years out, I hope this is a distant memory. Yeah, another, another theme I really picked up in there, it's just the connectedness, connectivity between so many things from transportation to history to arts and culture to natural areas like I I was trying to note like how many times I kept hearing the word interconnectedness and connectivity. So I feel like that was a big theme in that one and and just connectedness in a lot of really creative ways. So beautiful, great job, you guys. Well done, team two, team three. Oh, and let's see, you guys have some images over here. We didn't even get to highlight the images. Tell us, this is obviously the natural areas, wetlands that you're imagining, right? Are the connectivity of the bike lanes? What's this here?
That's the map, a current map, I think, maybe even an old map of the bypass.
Oh, okay, bypass. And then some art incorporated. Excellent.
Yep.
Well done. Yeah, I think the visuals, it really helps us, helps to bring it to life. Okay, who wants to go next? Which group are we going to zero in on next? One or two? Who's presenting? Yeah, you scared him off, Carl. Nobody wants to jump in.
Hey, Stan, do you want to do, present for team one with all, you're always excited and you do a great job of hyping things up? That's a, that's a compliment.
Meeting or I won't say these words in my head right now.
Okay.
I will, I will do it.
All right. Stan, take it away. Tell us your vision for team one.
Yes, team one. So headline is Sandy, Oregon, top five places in the US to live, work and play. I know we all wonder where that came from. Thank you to Mr. Jeremy. And we've always really liked that, obviously, that encompasses live, work and play, right? A full, full meal deal of experiences living here in Sandy. Main points is live, you know, Sandy's restaurants offer local cuisine, fresh cut salmon and steelhead, microbrews, fresh baked bread, fresh berries, Sandy Transit offers shopper shuttles connections to the Portland metro area. And then, of course, we touched on the around the mountain, you know, that we're kind of the very beginning stages of right now. But, you know, we're talking 20 years into the future. Sandy offers numerous businesses to work. And it's a world-class city operated internet services allow folks to work from home. Sandy's proximity to Portland's metro area offers numerous community commuting opportunities, Sandy's autonomous alternative fuel vehicles are cutting-edge mobility. One thing to think about is, you know, it might not be the internet 20 years from now, but what is that, right? And always kind of staying on the the cutting edge and being innovative and and looking to the future and leading our community that way. Play Sandy's local location is a gateway to Mount Hood provides miles of hiking and mountain biking trails. Dozens of park range from fishing spots along the Sandy River to pump tracks and climbing walls. Families find fun at the local pool. The large library offers a creative space to explore arts and crafts, technology and group activities. And the trail system links neighborhoods to retail areas, schools and local parks as driving is optional. And Sandy is known for its creative and innovative emphasis on artists and outdoor enthusiasts. And like-minded, can find like-minded souls in Sandy. Supporting detail is our continued efforts towards walkability and activities for young families and younger members of our community. We talked a lot about expanding our events and arts and events and the Sandy Mountain Festival in the summer. And there was a conversation, you'll kind of know probably who it came from on dominating the holidays in in Sandy and, you know, like the grotto type atmosphere in Myding Park maps with our holiday tree lighting and and Mountain Mocha and Joe's Donuts, just really owning the holidays is something for people to stop and recreate and tourists and spend their money at local businesses. You know, all throughout the year, just different things that attract people. The buzz, different hashtags, Sandy innovation, Sandy net, mountain bike Mecca, Sandy family friendly gateway to Mount Hood. Yes, yes. We found consensus returning to the gateway to Mount Hood. I would love for that to be not a full goal, but we should definitely talk about that as a council. Best view in Oregon, sand, sandy festivals, back to the festival conversation I just was talking about. The Sandy Way locally sourced. Those are a lot of our hashtags. And then, of course, we've got, we made sure, you know, Andy's in our group. So we, and we definitely wanted to make sure to highlight our mobility and our Sandy Transit and our shopper shuttle there.
All right. Great job, group one. Some themes there that came out, a couple of things, I mean, innovation and creativity and just this again, this, this theme of connectedness came out for me of just like through, through community events and festivals and just and being, being number one, being the best leading in these areas and just this whole, this gateway to all kinds of recreation really stood out in the conversation. Anybody else have anything that really stood out from team one's presentation?
I would just say that I really like the bypass idea.
Yeah. Good. Well,
I would say there's a couple of things that were similar in group three and in whatever group Stan is in. And I think that is some real I guess it shouldn't be too unusual that we all are thinking a lot of the same kind of things because we all have been in Sandy for a while here now. But it was interesting that there were some things that were similar in both side. I thought I saw a lot of trail talk, a lot of connectivity between different parts of the city and I and I surely like the idea of the community center doing well.
Yes. All right, let's hear from our last group. Who's presenting for team two?
Do you just want me to walk through it?
Go for it, Don.
Okay. We're not nearly as pretty in terms of our presentation and I'll take full blame for that. I'll work on my marketing skills later. And we didn't necessarily land on a single headline, but we had several themes that I think we we kind of, they're all kind of around that same theme and many of which have been echoed already. But the idea that the town no one wants to leave or America's most livable, escape the busyness. I actually, for me personally, that one resonates a lot. It's one of the things I like about Sandy is it's peaceful compared to other, many other places, certainly where I normally would work. And that live, work and play in Sandy. So you, those things marry well with, I think, what the other two groups did. As far as the main points, we talked about, we had the finance guy, so I'm sorry in advance, but the Gold Star City Administration financially responsible. Thanks, Tyler. Good job. I'll stop teasing you. I apologize. It's
Don't worry, Don.
My budget items just got cut, I can tell. Well-planned out town, affordable diversity of housing. I mean, as we talked about this 20 years ago, the concern is that we price out the young families, the first-time buyers, or even the renters that really might be the lifeblood of a lot of the community. Talk about my mountain bike trails. You'll see that theme of that connectedness through several of these items as well. We I hadn't really thought about this one. So this wasn't my idea, but I really like it, which is that central to everything. Because you are a gateway to Central Oregon or the coast or the gorge. There's a lot within an hour or two of here. And I think that's, that's a compelling story for me personally. Why I lived here. Why I lived here. I remember one of my friends telling me he surfed, skied and windsurfed, skied and I can't remember what else. Mountain biked all in the same day. That that's a big deal for him that he could do that while living here in Sandy. Our transit system with, you know, the ability to travel with your skis, with your bikes, with whatever. Our parks and trails, obviously Sandy Net and whatever that looks like twenty years from now, I think it probably will still be branded, even if it's wireless down the road, who knows? Didn't, we talked a lot about this, but the access to the river and it is especially as we talk about the community campus and things, the ability to leverage the river as a focal point. I mean, yes, we have Johnswood Point, it's beautiful, but it's not connected to the downtown. And as you drive through Sandy, if you didn't know much or you didn't know anything about Sandy, you wouldn't even know we have the beautiful river there. So it's definitely a geographic feature that we can and maybe should figure out how to leverage as we develop the campus and the the park area down there. Certainly for me, I look forward to outside living. I I moved here from Austin. Austin was the bomb for outdoor living. And I look forward to embracing that casual dining in atmosphere where you can just walk downtown and find out, you know, without a without a destination in mind, stop, find the right spot, the, you know, in a casual outdoor environment and extend that through the those shoulder seasons as long as possible. And maybe climate change will help us do that by global warming and we can, you know, that'll happen naturally. We talked about the electrification, electric vehicles and so forth, and we definitely want to be friendly to that. The idea perhaps that we did not opt to throw the bypass on here for feasibility reasons, but that doesn't mean that I think there would be a lot of enthusiasm for it. But we could see even electrification making the downtown corridor quieter twenty years from now as trucks and others are easier on the ears. As far as supporting details, we've already talked about the walking neighborhood design, parking, wide streets, making sure that we don't create poor, hard to live in neighborhoods and and we've got some that we could have done better that we talked about. And make sure those neighborhoods are family focused. As far as kind of the brainstorming areas, we talked about that connecting river to the town, but the other is if we're going to be this gateway, use Stan's term, or or even the central location, people need to be able to stay. And we don't really have a lot of accommodation ability right now. Whether it's VRBO Airbnb and Jordan points out, it's not even legal. It's like, okay, we got a lot of things to worry about or or to tackle if we're going to make this not just a place for people to stop for lunch, but to stay and spend time. We talked a little bit about businesses. I've skipped over that one. The idea that we, if we make all this livability, businesses will follow because there there will be good people who want to live here and that's a key thing to get a business to migrate here. They have to be able to entice people to to come here as well. So we think that's tied nicely together. And then we just threw a couple of those buzz words, not near as exciting as the rest of you also apologize, but the Sandy Way, the campus charming, and I thought that was an interesting word too, to describe our town of twenty years from now, charming. That would fit me because I'll be in my seventies. I'll be looking forward to charming at that point in time, so.
All right, excellent job, team two. And again, yeah, the these themes are tying really nicely together. Any any questions or anybody want to add anything from team two to Don's description?
Well, I want to comment that gonna say, I just want to say, I'm I'm going to be seventy here in about three months, so I'm definitely charming. So I think I like your title there.
All right, we got some votes for charming and the the gateway to Mount Hood. All right, any other comments on team two? I want to, it's seven, we're a little bit over, but I want to go ahead and give everybody a quick break to take five minutes. So any other comments on this? We're going to wrap it up and do the themes when we come back.
Can I just make one point of clarification?
Yes.
Just so that everybody understands. So for Airbnbs and VRBOs, we actually only right now require a business license. Most people that we've asked to do that have not complied, but we've just kind of dropped it. So while it's correct, there's no regulation around them, we're also not restricting or stopping them. I just want to make sure everybody understands that that like, we're not going out and telling people that they can't operate them. We're just kind of letting it be a free for all for now until we have regulation for it.
All right. Thanks for that clarification. Okay, let's go ahead. Let's take five minutes. So it's seven thirty eight. We will go until seven forty three and see you back here in five. You know, what sort of changes or what's what? How can we come to some agreement on a vision statement? You'll be able to send back different proposals. But I at least want to have some themes outlined here. So after you told all of your stories, what what themes were we hearing? Do you recall? I know it's, I know it's late, long day.
Um, trail connectivity.
Yes, trail connectivity. What else?
Downtown, we don't want the traffic.
What was that?
Quiet, quiet downtown.
Quiet downtown.
Full of traffic for sure, and the community center is a part of it.
Okay.
I saw a community theme throughout, whether it was community center or other things, the community itself.
I saw innovation and Sandy continuing to be a leader.
Yes.
It's us being more of a destination as opposed to a pass through.
Destination as opposed to a what?
Pass through.
Okay.
Or stopping pony, however you want to word that.
Okay. Yes. What else? What other things popped out?
One thing I didn't see a lot in our group didn't do, but I think we'd all agree on is safety. We want a safe, I mean, I should have brought it up then, I apologize, but.
Yeah, everybody okay with adding safety to the to the mix? I think it's, I think all the visions you described assume that it's a safe community, but I think it's, it's okay to call that out. What else? Other themes?
I thought of a lot of, we're in the edge of the forest and a lot of things I heard was about trees and rivers and things that are connected with the mountain.
Okay, just, yeah, connection to nature, to the mountain.
Outdoor activities.
Yeah. A mecca, I think you guys use of outdoor recreation. What else? I heard a lot, and especially in that first group, just about connectivity, the interconnectedness of all of the amenities in your community. That that seemed to be a theme that that came up in a couple.
Long-lived counselors.
Humor, I heard a lot of humor in this, in this brainstorming activity as well, which I appreciate. I think our city is better for the camaraderie and the humor that we bring to our meetings that is unlike other communities. I don't know how you put that into a statement. We're not Damascus.
Yeah, I think that might, we, I'll I'll note that that is a good one as you think about your team agreement for how to work together, because I do think that's an important element of how this team works together and how you can get work done. So.
One thing that I I think is important and we didn't necessarily include it piece it out, but the vitality of our local businesses and and kind of approaching our local businesses as as a partner, as a partnership.
Okay.
Is important, I think, for our future.
Yeah, you guys talked a lot about the the downtown and just, you know, having great jobs there in this two, two of the groups use live, work, play, and I think the work assumes that there's a really vibrant business community. And you said businesses partners.
We didn't say partners, but we did in group three. We talked about the businesses were incorporated within the community environment, so there are certainly going to be vibrant.
I think the diversity of our community, we didn't come out and call it out that way, but we talked about things for the old, the middle aged, the young. And
Yeah, so something for everyone, like the diversity of activities to serve everyone.
I see in this and 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 some of it didn't come out all the way, but we're the community hub, Sandy is the our original, I'm sorry, regional hub from government camp to boring to Estacada to you know, Corbett, we're the community center of all that.
Would the story that we've talked about all three different groups reflect the fact that we have a fair amount of change to make? We're certainly not there. But there's a fair amount of of movement from where we are, where we want to be.
Yeah, I mean, I think this exercise, that's really the point of it, is to think about where you want to be. And now, and now the next challenge will be thinking about goals that are going to move you a little bit closer. Granted, you're going to talk about some long-term stuff, but you guys are also going to talk about short-term stuff. And so I I want you to go into that exercise of mapping out those ideas and keeping with these themes and and movement and just again, I think yesterday what there was an important acknowledgement of just acceptance that growth is going to happen. And what you're describing to me, the stories that you're telling, is how growth should happen. I mean, you're you're illustrating what growth looks like in twenty years. Through imagery, through the stories, through the main points that you shared. And so I I think, yes, it definitely illustrates movement from where you are today to where you want to be.
Well, it also, it gives me the idea, I know that there are people in our community that want to go back to when city of Sandy was five or six thousand people in the small community, everybody knows everybody. You know, everybody that's in Safeway and in those days it was Danielson, but I do think that there is a other component much larger that says, so we're growing, we need to continue to grow, but I kind of described what our three pictures look like, that it's going to be a very different than what it is now and what it was two thousand and one.
Yeah, I don't know that you can really have the option to go backwards. Not sure how that works, but what I am hearing in your storytelling is that you're trying to preserve the sandy way and the things that make Sandy unique, charming, you use the word charming, preserving that small town charm. And and creating connectivity in different ways. You know, through these great community amenities that you're planning. So I don't know that you can just kick people out and go backwards in population. Some cities have done it, but that's a painful process to to watch. But yeah, you're finding different ways to embrace the growth and connect people.
Some of those people are pretty integral to our community. Some of them are are ancient, is that what I want to call them, settler families and such? So I would hate to discard them, but maybe help them to move them forward through the changes that are coming.
But let me build on that because we talked about connectivity. And maybe connected to our past is really another theme of connected.
Yes. Yeah, you guys mentioned that in the first group that presented.
Kind of a Sandy two point O, right? I mean, because none of the stuff we're talking about Sandy growing to it's different than what we have today. We're talking about great festivals, but festivals at a different level. Innovation, just different innovation, new innovation, you know, things that are changing. Lee at the Sandy wave, you know, addressing problems and with an innovative, community minded approach. Well, we're just going to have new problems. Right? And so it's just, it's kind of keeping who we are, you know, while acknowledging, you know, that these things are just, they're going to grow in these different ways.
Okay. Other other thoughts? Hold on, let's uh, let's go back to the raised hand, so it's not so clunky, otherwise it gets awkward when people jump in. So I heard Kathleen and and then Jordan.
I was just going to say, you know, what what I hear a lot from people is, you know, we don't want to be Portland. That's kind of a negative thing. You know, I don't know how to say that in a positive way, if somebody can kind of come up with a, you know, a better descriptor than.
Well, I thought your headline was beautiful. Whoever came out, escape the busyness. That doesn't speak Portland to me. That says that this is a quiet, like serene place to go to recharge and regroup.
Yeah. Escape crazy, escape crazy town there. And I was just down there tonight, so just bemoaning all the garbage and everything.
I've always heard that the Sandy style is not just the front of our businesses, it's the way we live. So I I love the word Sandy style. I think that describes a lot of what Sandy is.
Okay. Uh, Jordan, what were you going to add?
I was just going to add to add on to Don's point about connected to history, a theme that you at least I've heard before is kind of the pioneering spirit of Sandy and that goes to the innovation and you know, sort of the boldness of folks that, you know, settled here and part of that Oregon Trail and and you know, kind of doing it the Sandy way is that pioneering spirit.
Okay, excellent. That's great. You guys are giving me a lot to lots of work with here. All right, anything else? That you want to add, that anybody wants to add right now? This won't be your last chance to to play with this wording and and see what, see what resonates. All right, I just want to show you before we go into this next exercise, just share the screen once more for anybody who's maybe not following along on the mural board. So here are some of the themes. That that you came up with. And so I just, I want you to keep these themes in mind, keep the conversations that you had in mind around your visioning stories. Keep the context mapping in mind and some of the great ideas that surfaced during that exercise. And I want you to build on all of that and try to extract as you think about the goals. Stay aligned with this, with with these ideas of knowing that this is where you want to be. And I want you to think about what are some ideas as for goals for priorities that would help you get get closer to this for the next couple of years? And again, I don't want, don't be, don't limit yourselves too much in this first round, like this is an opportunity to brainstorm and to get all the ideas out on the table. We will go through the refinement process and 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 flush that out. So just, you know, don't, don't get too hung up on can we afford it or, you know, obviously you want to be reasonable and we want these goals to be realistic, but don't try to think through every every piece of the logistics of how it might get done, just get the ideas out so that we get them all out on the table. Questions about that? And so yes, Kathleen.
Again, I don't want to be questioning things or being too negative, but one of the things that I'm wanting us to have a little more discussion about here. You know, this whole idea of a bypass, on the one hand, it's a great idea. It, you know, it helps with the traffic and all. On the other hand, what I fear is that many of our businesses in downtown are already, you know, bacon or struggling. And the concern that I have is, you know, trying to have a vital downtown business and a bypass may not be realistic. And I, I'm not, you know, I'm not trying to kind of say, let's have that conversation now, but this whole kind of push to do a bypass, we really haven't talked to the businesses and how they feel about it, or the residents that live on the south side of town and how they feel about it. So I guess I'm just a little bit hesitant. Again, it solves some problems, but it creates other problems that I'm a little hesitant to kind of, you know, say that we've got a consensus on on a bypass here. If that's not what we're saying, that's fine. I'm I'm glad to explore the opportunity, but I I'm not all in. I just want to kind of put that out there for folks.
Okay.
Yeah, I I would just say Kathleen, you know, so the study that's coming forward, that's a huge aspect of this is stakeholder involvement to talk to local small business owners to find out their feel on the main street. So I I and I I know, like, we saw some presentations and have some of that chatter, but I mean, no, we're just not nowhere as a council with that study to even at this point to be able to make a decision, you know, whether to have a bypass or not. You know, kind of where we are, I think, is exactly what you're saying there, which is if that's something that the city is going to look at, what what are the factors, right? What's the cost? What's the geography? What's the stakeholder and business community support? And that's what we're writing. And that's what we're right in the middle of. So to, I think I'm agreeing with you and saying that you, I just, I don't think we're there yet anyways.
Well, that is, I will go on the record, that is news because the last time it was mentioned in a city council meeting that I attended, this is before I was councillor, and I asked about what is, you know, and Kelly was also in on that was, you know, what is the plan to involve the businesses and the public? And the answer that I got at that point was, at this point, there was no plan because that wasn't part of the bid from the consultant or something. So I appreciate that that could have changed since then. I think that's the right way to be going is to really involve those stakeholders and I'm hopeful that that happened. So that's exactly the 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 direction that we need to go. Thanks for answering that.
Yeah, I and I just want to acknowledge Dawn's comment in the chat. It said regards to a bypass. We're only looking two years, so anything would be preliminary exploration only. And Kelly has something.
I could send everybody up tomorrow. I'll have to dig through my paperwork and my computer, but I could send everybody what the bypass feasibility assessment includes. For $96,000, you're not going to get, the consultants are not going to be going door to door to businesses and talking to them. It's more of a big picture look, but I I'd be happy to share that with you guys tomorrow if I can find it. Well, I I can find it. It'll just take me time to look through my computer.
All right.
I can send it to this entire group if you'd like.
Well, let's get, let's do do that because when we sat down with ODOT and it was me and Jordan in there, Mike might have been there as well. You know, there was definitely a conversation. In fact, we went with a plan that was a little bit more in scope as far as the city and what they were both contributing because we wanted the full, we wanted the full look and study. So I I would love to see some clarity to that. Thank you.
Okay, good. And so just one other point of clarification, when you get into your groups, you may have some differing ideas on what gets mapped out. Just get all the ideas mapped out. I I certainly want you to have some dialogue. But amongst, you know, the various ideas that get thrown out, but just capture everybody's ideas. We will have more of a chance to again, to sort through them, to refine them. Uh, but I want to make sure that everything gets out on the table so that we have a full picture to look at. And again, keep it in line with with the things we've talked about so far, as far as like thinking about that forward vision and that forward movement. Um, any questions about this? I'm going to put you, do you guys want to work in the same groups or do you want me to mix it up again?
How and where are we capturing this, Sarah?
So, okay, good question. Thank you. Right now, I just want you guys to make some lists or you can, I can create some blank areas down here for you guys to capture post-its and put your post-its on the mural board and then we can move them over. I don't want, we're not going to put them necessarily on a template quite yet, so I just want you to have some space to brainstorm. So why don't I put is it helpful? Did you guys like being able to capture on the mural board and just use the post-its? Yeah, okay, I will create three workspaces for the teams and you guys can record on those. Again, do you guys want same groups or you want me to switch it up again? Do you want to keep mixing?
I like mixing. It just gets other ideas and I don't know how many more of these groups we're going to get and I, we haven't been all together yet.
Okay.
To clarify, can you just state exactly, I'm confused, exactly what we're trying to lay out and maybe I.
Yes. So let me, um, let me share over here again. So now we're at the point in the process. So we've talked about the vision, what direction are we headed? And now we're going and we talked about the context. And now we're getting into gathering all the ideas. So what goals or strategies are going to help us move towards that vision? Um, and are there any new ideas that the city should consider? So this is, and and again, I want you, it's, people think differently. So some people are going to throw up some really high level like that 30,000 foot policy direction type goals. And other people may be thinking about some of the strategic initiatives that might help to achieve the goals. It's all good. We're going to sort it all out. I would try to encourage you to stay as high level as you can, but I do also think that some of that strategy talk helps to give staff clear direction on what the council's thinking. Um, you're going to have staff in your group again to remind you of, you know, you lean on their professional expertise to help help flush some of this this stuff out. Think about all of the resources they provided ahead of time. Think about what we talked about in the interviews. I'm going to be cross referencing based on the ideas that come up. Uh, as far as what themes I heard in the interviews to make sure that we're not missing anything towards the end. That all the ideas came out in some some fashion. Yes, Carl.
How do the goals and the things that you asked us for in our individual interviews get incorporated into this one?
This is an opportunity to share those now in your small groups and have some discussion around that. So, and again, I will reference the notes, but the notes that came forward, I looked for where there was synergy amongst the goals. So um, this is a chance for you to bring up your your interests and the goals that you hope to see come forward. Um, again, I want you to try to break from any past structure and and again, we're changing the process. So if you've been part of these goal setting sessions in the past, don't try to stay focused on that long laundry list of priorities. Let's just start, start fresh, start new based on what we've talked about. I'm going to check on you guys throughout this exercise. So this is one somewhere I feel like the groups need more direction, but you need to get in and just start. It's a brainstorming exercise. We talked about it in the meeting. I asked you what your priorities were and you guys all had priorities to share. You're doing the same thing, only you're doing it with each other versus with just me. Got it? You can do it. I have faith. Lots of groups, I've done this exercise with many groups. You've you've got this. Guys are smarter than the average bear. All right. Let's, um, let me switch up your groups here. And I'm never going to just leave you alone, so don't worry about that. Okay, now I have to remember who has not worked together yet.
Don't put me with Stan. We're just in a conversation about a bypass.
All right, uh, let's see. My list here. Um, all right, I'll just have to kind of go from memory.
You can just do it random, whatever is easy. How long will we have, Sarah?
Um, you guys are going to have, I'm going to start you out with 30 minutes and see how you do. Six in that group. I it's so again, I'm just, I'm doing my best to try and mix you all up. Hopefully you guys are working with new people.
Okay, we won't hold you responsible for.
Yeah, when I do it on the, sometimes I try to think about it ahead of time and have it kind of planned out, but doing it on the fly is a little harder.
Just roll the dice.
So we'll see how this shakes out. I don't know who signed in as City of Sandy, if that's a staff person.
Just roll the dice.
Okay, we're, I'm not going to put them in because I didn't have them in last time, so I can assign them if they speak up.
Every community member in Sandy is in that spot.
Okay, there you go.
If people have access to that account.
How was, how was that? I know it was a little bit of a struggle to get rolling, but I, it looks like you guys all got there.
Well, we just copied the other people's work as we went along. You got that.
I have to admit, I I did peek once in a while to the sides, but since I was the scribe, don't laugh at all my misspellings or shorthand.
No, we will, we will not do that. Yeah, that copy and paste feature is really handy and it's going to make consensus really simple if that's the case. All right, so you guys ready to wrap this up tonight? Where I want, um, let's keep the, try to keep the presentations quick so that we can end on time. I will, you guys will get a chance, we will, are going to delve into this deeper uh, in our next session. That's where we'll start to get into the refinement, but let's try to see, let's see if we can't sort these into some themes based on what you came up with. So I'm going to grab group threes ideas here. And I'm going to, I'm not going to change the way you guys put them, but I am going to copy them and move them over. So if group three could kind of talk us through what they came up with, I'm going to share my screen so you can see what I'm doing.
Who was group three?
Group three was that was, uh, George, Andy, Greg, Jordan, Kelly, Richard, Stan.
I'll chat us through it if that's what just to get this going.
Yeah, let's keep. Thank you.
So, uh, I guess what do you want? I mean, do you want me to talk about each one or what are we, how do you want that done, Sarah?
Yeah, let's start. Um, it looks like you guys have like a theme of COVID-19 recovery over here. Let's start there.
Yeah, so the the COVID-19 recovery, we kind of talked about some of the, you know, coming out of this, exactly how long this is going to be is is, it was kind of in the two year plan. We hope that we have the vaccines rolling out. Um, and then also what kind of recovery is going to have to come of that? Also looking at it, um, out of the the solutions that we've put in place, which ones have actually, which which ones do we want to go back to the way we were and which ones do we want to keep and and continue as our new norm? And then what does that norm look like? And how can we assist? Like it says, utility payment, uh, business recovery, all of that stuff.
Okay.
Can we support our people?
Can we take community campus next?
Yeah. So on that one, we decided within the next couple of years that we should probably look at what, where, where do we want to go with our community campus and start diving into that a little more deeper into that deciding, do we want to go, uh, does it look like a bond? Do we go to a tax district just continuing that that movement? But maybe with a little more steam.
Okay, uh, anything else on here related to community campus?
I don't think there was really.
Okay, let's take, um, let's take the comp plan.
Okay. So that one in the TSP, we decided that that needs to, um, as as a goal, we need to go through that and reevaluate our 1995 or 97 um, and bring it back up to 2021 at least. If not, probably looking into the future even more on both of those.
All right. Um, you guys have a quite a bit around transportation. I'm going to just kind of put these over here because they're, it's all related under that theme. So feel free to move them to talk about it.
Explore transit route was another one. That one falls under there. 211, uh, what do we want to see now that we own that? Discussion about that. 360 second and Bell. Not just with the the actual street construction, but what does the area around it look like? How can we, how can we possibly control what goes into that or influence what goes into that area? I don't want to use the word control.
I don't know, it's short term and long term. I feel like that for growth kind of ties in with that's a comp plan.
Yeah, yeah, it does. Um, you know, one of the things is how, what can we, what can we do for now so that we ensure to basically give us time to look at how we want to grow long term? So what solutions can we put in now to help us so that we can not be over influenced when we're trying to do our long term growth plan and trying to rush it through it? And and guys, if I'm, if I'm messing this up, please, if if my translations aren't working right, uh, help me out through this.
Rich, I think you're doing great, bud.
Foster on to, um, on, boy.
It's all right.
It is, it's all starting to run together. So, yeah, I mean, I think that one's pretty much self explanatory. We want to, um, how can we foster businesses and innovation within our city? That can be everything from businesses to improving our standing net, um, to improving are the way we, um, and who we interact with outside of the city as well.
There feels like there's an economic development theme here.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Yes, okay. What's, oh, this is the, is this wastewater?
Yeah. Yeah, the next, within the next two years, we we probably should come up with a plan since we have till 2024 to to act. Then we have a diversity of revenue sources. Again, that's, uh, looking at how do we get to our goals, but how, not only, not only how do we envision our goals and what we want, but how are we going to pay for that? And not relying so much on grants and looking for other, uh, revenue sources to pay for our grandiose ideas.
Okay.
Uh, book mobiles, that was something I think still stands term. It was a library 2.0. Um, is just kind of a next step for our library and its continued expansion and growth. And as we look, you know, to what a library might look like 20 years in the future, what some ideas it would maybe look like now. Uh, build a park and finish master plan. Same thing, I I think we're, that's, to me, that kind of goes under the grow-ish area, maybe the community campus decide and act. Is a private better.
Yeah, there's probably going to be a whole recreation. Yeah.
Yeah. And so, you know, that was just one of the ideas is like, you know, for the community campus, do we just build a park and and just and do what we can within our means there. Homelessness Task Force, uh, that's kind of coming up with a, it can't be, you know, putting all of it on one department to fix. It really is going to take a collaborative effort to to deal with those those issues and how do you, and so basically should we form a a task force of put more minds on the problem to come up with more better solutions? And then the Oregon Lifeline, I'm sorry, guys, I don't remember what that one is.
That one was one I put in, that was something specifically more goes underneath the Sandy at Department. It's, um, rate assistance, uh, through the state for, um, low, lower income.
Okay, I'm going to put, I'm going to put it right here for right now. It's it's low income support for internet access. Okay. Anybody from that group want to add anything else to this conversation?
I just wanted to point out that, um, I think Rich did a fantastic job there, summarized it much better than I would have done at this time of night. The one thing I do want to point out is that the short term growth solutions, that was something I just wanted to point out that I'd really like direction from council, um, on, is there anything that we would like to do in the next six months or so? And one thing I threw out there was like, if we don't think PDs are that great of an idea, plan developments, and if they could be an issue because we don't know how they turn out, maybe we just repeal that section of the code for now. And then during the comp plan study, look at if we want to add it back in, and if we do, how we want that code section to be written when it's added back in. So I just wanted to kind of explain that and kind of flesh that out that I think we should look at some things like that.
Okay, we'll get into, we'll be able to have some more refinement conversation tomorrow where I are the, at the next meeting where I think we might get into more stuff like that. All right, this group really got fancy with their mural skills, um, and color coded all their post-its. Okay, who, who was part of group two?
Well, that was me, Jeremy.
Jeremy, you've got this mastered. Um, who's going to, are you going to take? Are you going to take us through the ideas as we sort, kind of sort through them?
Um, I can, since I was the scribe and, uh, probably no one understands my chicken scratch. So, and they can correct me if I'm wrong, guys, on any of this stuff. So I kind of color coded them just to because they were my was coming up as the thoughts that goes along with maybe that goal. So we had the 360 second Bell Street completed, you know, they're opening up the commercial property developed north of Highway 26. And it's supposed to be 360 second, 360 second. Um, and what that brings in for tax base as well as the quality of life. I gotta zoom in on my screen. I can't read my own writing. More connecting roads north and south, better transportation for our community, back to that livability piece of it.
Mate, I'm going to move this one for right now over here. I might separate out some of this transportation stuff because I feel like there's a probably going to be a stronger theme. Again, everything's very interconnected, but I feel like we're going to get a lot in that regard. So, okay. Um, go ahead, let's, let's take on these blue ones over here.
Yeah, so the blue ones are kind of around the community campus. Um, it all kind of relate to the community campus. The plan and the progress and progressing it forward, uh, commitment, uh, for the community campus, making sure that there is a commitment with their council and in 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 our, in our community as well going forward. And you're moving them around. I mean, I can't. That's okay, that's okay. Deciding, you know, are we keeping an old pool or building a new pool and coming to that, that part of it. And coming to that, that part of it, um, parks and rec district, or what would that look like? Um, community campus committee, uh, brought up the goal of having community campus committee and what that would be. Uh, city-owned, uh, ball fields as part of that is, and, uh, lar, a larger city hall, uh, expansion of office spaces mainly is what that was around. And having other areas with inside that community campus. And, um, a bigger library, more rooms, uh, the library is, you know, we built it and it's quite popular, it's too small. And so expanding into that, adding more programs or, um, meeting spaces and lack of meeting spaces in our community. So, uh, that was part of that, uh, all revolving around that community center.
Okay, let's take on the wastewater.
Yeah, so the wastewater sewer treatment plant, obviously, I think that's just, uh, given for everyone, we, it's, it has to be. Um, but then also, uh, the wastewater, uh, wetlands and, and how, and what we do with that wetlands. And how do we use that as to our advantage here in Sandy?
Okay, um, law enforcement technology.
The law enforcement technology was, uh, something that was spurred off of yesterday as well as kind of getting in, uh, to the twenty-first century on, um, using technology to, uh, from more e-ticketings, the video, things that we can do with it to, um, radar and everything else that technology can bring to law enforcement, keeping our community safe.
Okay. Um, I'm going to have, I'm, I don't have enough spots on this circle, so we're going to, we'll just create a new level out here for technology. There may be some other stuff that comes up and it may, as we sort through, we may find some more synergy, keep moving it around. Okay, let's take on the economic development ones.
Yeah, working on economic development, uh, we had, uh, master plans, one of them being Pleasant Street and the build-out came around with business development. Um, and, um, within business development, uh, you know, growing within our own, but, uh, especially I've come out of COVID and everything else with that. But then also childcare in that as well, because, um, part of the economic development, uh, piece of it, um, as we found out hinges a lot with childcare and the need for that there.
Um, environmental sustainability.
Yeah, um, with that, um, just with the electrification, we talked about this earlier tonight with buses and, um, and the lower fossil fuels as well as, um, biking and, um, help me out, guys.
Alternative energy sources.
Alternative energy sources, um, solar and other things like that, so.
Okay. Um, again, I'm going to, I don't know, I'm going to list it off to the side here for now, see if we find some other synergy there. Uh, let's see, grant writing, grant writer.
Yeah, I think just kind of self-explanatory, um, we've talked about, you know, we've done it our own, we can do it our own. We have a lot of people in our community that can do it, uh, but there was some feeling amongst some of us that, uh, you know, um, you know, me particularly. You know, um, we see a lot of people get a lot of grants, you know, they have, uh, people that are dedicated to doing that. Um, it, good at that, if we're going to get some grant writers, uh, grants and lots of them.
Um, okay, and then financial stability.
Financials, yeah, financial stability, um, just in our city, um, as we grow, you know, we have these, a lot of programs and we have a lot of parks and we have a lot of, um, amenities and things. And as we grow and have all these ideas, they take up a lot of finances. And so of course, we had Tyler in our group and so he was rightfully putting out there for us, um, to always be mindful of the financial stability of that. And, uh, um, knowing where, and finding new sources for money to come from, to help with, um, the programs and activities that we're providing.
Okay, and then this one, again, I'm, you guys talked a, a lot about this in your interviews around community engagement. So I'm just going to start another theme over here. But why don't you go ahead, anything you want to say about this one, getting more people involved in decision-making?
Yeah, just to get the word out more, um, you know, we've talked about, it was a goal of ours a couple of years ago about having, um, public information officer type, um, position. Jeff Phil fills a lot of that role there, um, just, but you know, how do we get that information out ahead of time? It, it's always, I mean, I've done this for a long time, they don't come until the eleventh hour after you've made the decision. They're getting out there so that they know that there's, um, people, um, that, then, you know, we are doing X, Y, Z ahead of time and not at the last minute, whether that's not necessarily say Facebook, but throughout other means of communication. To get people involved.
Let's see, let's talk about these three over here.
Um, so streamlining the roles with parks and recreation, um, parks and recreation in, uh, in kind of on a shoestring through that process and, um, kind of, um, the roles have been divided amongst, uh, different departments in the past and different areas with a little bit coming from here to there and, and so kind of solidifying, streamlining that, um, maintaining all of our parks and costs, uh, to, uh, be able to have that and then expansion of our city trail system as well. When we're talking about being able to afford them, but yet, you know, having the great amenities of our trail systems, um, there.
Um, let's see, we have a category for comp plan.
So yeah, starting our comp plan, uh, which I think is on everybody's there, we've talked about in the past, but also then updating why that takes that process for the next three years or so. Um, being able to identify and update, uh, parts of our development code that, um, um, need to be updated because of the states changing this or that regulations. And so, uh, we don't get caught, uh, flat-footed on some developments that may be coming in that, uh, uh, an updated code would have, um, help.
Okay, and then expansion of Sandy net, and then we have this other one for a new grade school.
Yeah, new grade school, I'll be honest, I was the one that was one of my, on there, um, with our community growing where it's at. Do we want to have something in our city or always being pushed out to, to, um, outside our city? And, um, walkable to our schools and, uh, the one we have is old.
Okay, nice job group two. Alright, one more group to get through. I might run a few minutes over, but I think we can get there quickly and then reflect on this more next time. Okay. So let's start, uh, community campus. Who's going to walk us through these?
I mean, I, you know, I wrote again, so, uh, community campus, so refining and revising, uh, the plan. There may be elements of the existing plan that we can all agree on and use, but just kind of, um, charting a direction forward on that. And then that one related, um, charting a path forward for the aquatic center. Well, I mean, there are a lot of decisions to be made there, uh, what are we going to do? Um, yeah, we had some, Sarah, that was sort of, um, kind of process or almost like meta, right? So this one is revamping the council policies to create a framework for future goals to fit within, to retain some continuity going forward in future years.
Okay. Put that up there for now. Um, oh, it looks like these kind of maybe, this maybe goes with some of that.
Council rules, yeah, and we had a discussion about that, um, that that was actually something people wanted to take on and kind of talking about internal communication. That one there that to the right, to bottom right of your mouse about prioritization is also related. So this is sort of like how we do policy setting in the city. It was almost something that people thought we should spend some time on.
Okay. Um, alright, let's see, partnerships?
Yeah, um, that was, that was one that was said, um, making sure we have effective partnerships with other agencies. Um, not sure where that one fits, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not, and we, we don't have to be sure about where everything fits right now. Again, I'm just trying to group where, where we see obvious groupings. Uh, COVID, successful exit strategy, we can throw that over there. Homelessness, we can throw that there.
Yeah. Three sixty-second, other people have talked about.
Yep.
Economic development.
Um, three sixty-second, there we go. Uh, economic development, throw that up here. Um, community events and celebrations, what else do you guys have on there?
Yeah, you know, we talked about, we just talked about this need for community connection, um, fireworks. We've got this idea of, um, celebrating Sandy's history and I think, I think I have that math right, hundred and ten years or something like that, so just kind of celebrating that.
Okay, um, wastewater.
Right.
There, um, growth thoughtful and smart, uh, I think that goes there. This one's small.
Oh, just that staff would really benefit from understanding, you know, council's consensus position on growth.
Okay, um, the master plans.
Yeah, we have a ton of plans just across the organization. So this was just sort of a broad statement of we really need to finish them and look for the interconnectivity between them.
Alright, um, theme there, partnership here. Oh, and chart a path forward on the arts commission.
Yeah, it's, it's not really, it's not currently func, uh, functional. Uh, we, uh, need to have some conversations about what that looks like going forward.
Okay.
Did you, did I say shooting off fireworks? This must be Exner's group.
What, what gave it away, Stan?
You're darn right, it was my idea. We're going to shoot that puppy off somehow this year. Find an excuse.
Um, alright. So you can see, this is already, I, I'll send you guys an export of this so you can, um, so you can kind of reflect on it some more. But you can see there's, there are a lot of common themes that come out and there's also some, some one-offs. Um, like one group came up with it, but we didn't necessarily hear it reflected in all the groups. So I think that's where we'll need to have some additional discussion and that's where we start the refinement process. So again, I will send this to you guys and between now and our next meeting, um, you'll have a chance to reflect and see if anything was missing. I also will go back and cross-reference and from the interview notes, what I heard to make sure that, um, you know, there, there wasn't anything missing that came up as major themes there. And, um, and that's what, that'll be our jumping off point from next, for next time. Uh, the other thing, I, so this is not like a fully hashed out vision statement, but I at least tried to pull some of the themes. And again, I will, I'll try to craft this into a more succinct vision statement and to get, send you guys to react to. So whatever I send you, uh, I expect that you will tear it apart and be terribly critical of it because that's, that will be your job. Um, so just know that, uh, I'm going to do my best to try and consolidate this into a succinct vision statement. And then you guys can send me back your proposals or have them ready for next time. So we'll start there and then we'll get into the refinement process on the goals. And that's the hard part. Our next meeting is the hard work. So, um, be ready to, to roll the sleeves. You're not having to do it at night. It's going to be on a Saturday morning, not too early, so hopefully, uh, hopefully that helps. Stan, you want to close us out?
Yeah, thank you, Sarah. Great meeting today. Uh, just a reminder, uh, so over, o, over the next couple of days, and then we have a city council meeting on Monday. My plan is, is to, um, send you all an email about committee assignments and, um, you know, different opportunities and kind of ask for your feedback as to where your passions are and where you would like to be appointed. I'll ask for a couple of different options. And my hope is, is, uh, by Monday's meeting, I'll be able to announce, you know, where we're at or have an email memo out to everybody as to committee assignments. And great job tonight, uh, great energy. I know it's been a long two days. We get a couple of days break and then we'll have kind of Saturday mid-morning, which will be nice. The only thing I would ask everybody going into this final meeting is, is, as I look at these goals after this exercise, they're great. And it really feels like a lot of us are on the same page and thinking of the same things. But at this point, they're very broad, right? Like address our future wastewater treatment and, you know, go after transportation. And the one thing I did really like about our last goals was, is that we had some concrete like, in the next two years or in the next year, where exactly are we going to be with our wastewater facility plan? You know, uh, we'll be developing and ask for the legislature, we'll be adopted phase one, you know, actual concrete things that we can hold both of ourselves as counselors and our staff, all of our teammates accountable on actually progressing and tracking the progress on this stuff. So great job tonight, looking forward to, uh, talking to everybody on Saturday. And, and hopefully by the end of Monday's meeting, we're not completely sick and tired of each other and burnt out. But I think we're doing great. Thank you for your participation. We'll see you all on Saturday.
Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
Hey, thanks.
Hey.
Thanks, Sarah.